College meeting's in order. Thank you all for being here today. We have a packed agenda and I got somewhere I gotta be, so we're gonna hustle today as much as we can. And we had a budget update from our budget director Bart Hampst.
As the commissioner said, I know we have a full schedule today, so go through this, and if I'm going too fast, please stop me and I'll answer any questions you may have. We're gonna talk today about our 2025 second quarter results. This presentation will be focusing on federal state budget, we'll touch base on that, financial analysis and reporting, as always, the general fund and revenue expenses. And we'll touch base on sales tax and 2026 budgets. As we move on to discuss the federal state funding, every day, we continuously work to evolve our financial reporting and analysis tools to better understand the financial trends and changes that impact our financial environment. These steps have never been more important right now as we continue to notice the changes in our federal funding. We continue to work and communicate with our, throughout the county, working with our elected officials and departmental heads. And that has paid dividends over the last few years, it's accounted dividends to the county in areas such as investment earnings. We, this has grown to about 14.2% of the county revenue in 2024 and 2025. The expenses for the county continue to have, we continue to invest in areas that will help control our costs in the future years. The county has invested in IT infrastructure as we continue to protect and attack the county's security attack issues that we face on a day-to-day basis. We continue to maintain our buildings to ensure our maintenance and updates, our maintenance is updated to control future costs. And finally, we continue to invest in areas like the workforce center to support future growth. We also continue to look into all future streams and understand how changes could impact departments and other agencies. And as we've talked about the last few weeks, we are looking into all federal and state funding to ensure, we are looking into how those changes could affect us in the future. This chart represents the forecast for 2025 with actuals January through June and July through December. For the June forecast, revenue is currently forecasted about $68.2 million with expenses forecasted at $69.2 million. We'll review these details later on in this presentation. As we move on to the financial trend analysis, in revenue, we discussed last quarter there are timing of property tax revenue change in the first half settlements processed in March of 2025 versus April of 2024. Overall, our revenue is up about $1.8 million, about 5% year-over-year. And our cumulative June expenses is about $3.5 million or 10.7%. This increase was mainly driven by capital investments year-over-year as we invest in projects like the Shering Center and other projects throughout the county. As we discussed before, our previous reviews, we are also showing a spike in December as we usually do as we're holding certain expenses that we don't know the timing of those expenses. The timing of these expenses that usually process throughout the year, those will adjust as the time goes on. As we continue to monitor our financials by analyzing our actuals to date and our estimated forecast to ensure we are staying in within targets of our financial goals. We will adjust our finances as we navigate changes at the local, state, and federal levels. Moving on to the second quarter revenue results. I've again provided explanations to the revenue categories. We currently now have 120 separate revenue objects and summarizing the 10 different categories. The current revenue shows that the increase, we increased about $1.8 million in the second quarter of this year over 2024. The increase is mainly driven by $591,000 in fees and charge for services that were increased as well as sales tax, which is up in 2025. This chart represents our Q2 percentage of total revenue by category, which shows sales tax, property tax, as well as investment earnings remaining flat year-over-year and being consistent as we move through 2025. Moving on to the revenue highlights, as you can see, the above chart, the 2025 Q2 revenue came in at $37.6 million, which is a prior year, about $35.8 million, which equates to the $1.8 million we already discussed. Estimated increases were the result of the fees and charges for services as well as sales tax, which we already discussed. Investment earnings, which is up $273,000, property tax up $174,000. And we had increases in casino revenue, casino revenue, conveyance fees, we almost said rollback in local government. We did have some decreases that occurred that offset those, which was in jail rental and a slight increase in transfers year-over-year. As we move on to discuss sales tax, Fairfield County continues to be one of the lowest sales tax in Ohio, with only four counties having the lowest sales tax in Fairfield County. As we discussed earlier, sales tax increased about $580,000 year-over-year with sales tax, with auto sales tax being up 3.23%, and non-auto being up 4.9% year-to-date. Now, and move on to the second quarter expenses for 2025. We currently have 698 expense line items categorized into seven different categories. 2025 Q2 expenses increased estimated to $3.5 million. The increase was driven by transfers and personnel services, and I'll explain these in the next few slides. Our Q2 percentage of total expense by category shows that personnel services continues to be our overall largest expense, but the expense of total expenses remains flat year-over-year and consistent with last year's numbers. The expenses were $36.4 million versus $32.9 million in the prior year, which is again 10.7% increase. Where our transfers increased $2 million, and it was a result of our capital budget being higher than we planned than we planned in 2024 year-over-year, and that's due to our investments in, like we said, the Shering Center. We're also doing maintenance projects like parking lots and HVAC that were doing to maintain our buildings. We also had increases in personnel services and franchise benefits, but they were offset by slight increases in contract services and materials and supplies. The increases in transfers also is a little bit difference in timing of last year where this year they hit, or we transferred our our capital in March of this year versus July of the previous year. So last year happened in the third quarter. Moving on to 2026 budgets, our Level 3 Budget Entry Access ends August 27th, so a few weeks from here for general fund departments, and the Level 4 Budget Entry Access ends in December 1st, 2025 for non-general fund departments. Any questions?
Questions, Commissioner Davis?
I don't. I have the opportunity to meet rather frequently with Bart on a number of these issues. I'm up to speed and I appreciate your good work.
Thank you.
Commissioner Lewis?
Quite much, very clear and concise, thank you.
Well done, Bart.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have an update from our county auditor, Dr. Perry Brown.
No, not slides, but I do have the video. And as we begin, as the video becomes available, I just wanted to mention a little bit of our experiences of the informal hearings we're having relating to the sex annual update of the property values. We have already scheduled about 1,600 hearings, which is about 100 more than the previous year with the previous triennial update. And there are some emerging themes, and I will share those emerging themes with you. The first emerging theme is that senior citizens that don't qualify for the homestead program are very much interested in the state increasing that eligibility so that they do qualify for the homestead program. Right now, the eligibility is means tested and it's about $38,000 annually as an income, and the vast majority of our comments are that that is too low, it needs to be modernized. And we understand that millionaires might not be the ones that need to participate with the homestead program, but those of us that are middle income really should be able to participate in that program. That is by far the number one comment that we are receiving. The second is a general ire and fatigue about property tax levels, just a general fatigue, I'll just call it property tax fatigue, and a desire for property tax reform, of which most of those comments tend to focus on school, school funding, and the dissatisfaction with the ways that schools are funded. We get a lot of questions that we didn't get in the triennial about what about lottery? Why isn't the lottery funding the schools as much as it could be? And of course, we know it's a fraction of funding, and that's a different comment than we had during the triennial update. And then the third comment that we're receiving, I think one gentleman summed it up pretty well as he was sitting next to me. He didn't know that I was the county auditor and he thought I was a resident sitting along with him, and we had a very good conversation. And he said he moved here from Franklin County because Fairfield County's tax rates are lower. He said, "I moved here because of that, and I just don't want to see the taxes go up. I very much appreciate how the value of my house goes up. You know, I paid $425,000 for it, the auditor's value was 380. I understand that it needs to go up, I guess I just don't want my taxes to go up." And that was a very common conversation. We worked through some things about that. When he asked me to point out who the auditor was, I said I could do that quite easily and shook his hand and said, "I'm the auditor." You know, it was a good moment of humor, but at the same time, he did sum up very much that it is not that I don't want my property to retain or increase its value, I just don't want to pay any more in taxes, and I moved here for that very reason. And we've seen several folks, you know, comment along those lines. Also, the market continues to be in that mid-range, one that is very much a supply and demand-driven market. Just this past week, a relatively modest home, I would call it a modest home, seven square feet, so it's a small, modest home. It sold for $190,000 after being on the market just for about a week. Those types of properties are being snatched up very quickly, and it is affecting the market values. So those are the emerging themes that I've shared those with you. You'll see in your handouts a desk aid that we created to help people answer questions, share that with you. And then we also have requests of you. We have a fact sheet about damage and destruction, and you've seen this before, and just wanted to take this opportunity to make sure that people know that they can report the damage and destruction, whether it be through a flood or some other purpose, which they've updated their property, and that can adjust their property values. And we have seen that happen during these informal hearings as well. Earlier this year, the County Auditors Association asked me to create a fact sheet, which you have in front of you, about the roles of the county auditor. It's the yellow and blue one, that's a pretty content-thin fact sheet. After they saw the fact sheet and said, "Well, that's just great, but that's a pretty, that's a lot of words to read, can you create a video?" So this next video is the translation of that fact sheet into a video for Fairfield County, it's Fairfield County-specific, but before other counties, solid, we wanted you to have the courtesy to see it. And at the same time, our request for you is give us feedback before we release it, and we're ready.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Where that starts? So I wanna ask about the potential incentive for seniors and the $38,000. Is income the only barometer?
Age, age is also, so you have to be 65 and have that income. And there's another program that's for veterans who are, have a service disability.
Let me ask it in a different way then. If somebody is making $50,000 a year in retirement, but they have no assets whatsoever, and the next person, the person next to them has no income at all, but $10 million in the bank, they both get treated the same under the rules?
The means tested is for the income itself. And you must also have the credit against your primary residence. It's one credit to your primary residence, which you must occupy. There had been a couple of questions where people had more than one property, maybe one in another state, and they'd called that the primary residence. You can't call primary residence in Florida and also have a primary residence in Ohio. That question has recently come up as well. Now, there are some individuals who have been grandfathered. So before the Kasing administration changed the rules relating to the homestead program, if you were on that program, you were grandfathered. And, you know, many of those folks are still alive, and so they still are grandfathered into that program. So at one time, it didn't have a means-tested income, and the same, it rhymes with perplexor, was participating in the program. And that was thought to be wrong, of course it's wrong. And then in order to move that into a different program, they put the means tested on there. And most of the questions we're getting are, hey, it's just too low, bring it up. So now that I just turned 65, I wanna stay in my home that I've been in for 15, 20 years, that income level should be higher, which is a different thing than I'm on the program and I'd like to see it increase.
Yeah, and I don't know what's gonna happen with property taxes in the coming months or years or whatever, but nerves out even accidentally.
Yes, and so the idea would be maybe to double it, you know, maybe it should be 65,000 a year. You know, start with an income that's more modern in terms of what a middle income would feel like for senior citizens. Another kind of emerging theme, which is a little bit of, I'd say a minor theme, people are interested in the recommendations that have been made. And we've been providing to them the specific recommendations that have been made to the legislature and even white papers that have been drafted. And those who are interested in that sort of thing are very much appreciative of it.
Go, Tate Bennett?
[crosstalk]
That concludes the video. And does anybody have any questions?
Mr. Davis.
So I had a conversation with Senator Hughes the other day, and I actually brought up about the homes dead. And whether that threshold should be increased. And and he said, well, he said, and he agreed with that, but he said, we're leaving out one of the demographics that is also being highly impacted. That's the young people entering in their first home purchase. They're being highly impacted because generally their income hasn't risen to the level where they can afford many things. So I think we need to broaden our thinking just a little bit. Because I never, I never even considered that, quite frankly.
Yeah, there are four recommendations from the County Auditors Association, and the fourth recommendation includes the very point that you just made. We hear less about that, but it is included in those recommendations.
Thank you for showing us the video. It's long. It's all feedback I got. It's informative. We were engaged someone for 14 minutes.
Yeah, the idea is we're going to do snippets. So you'll just see little bits at a time. But we're providing it all at once to the various counties for their considerations.
Yeah, we continue to set the bar higher, right, for the rest of the state. So thank you for all that you're doing.
One final word about the sex annual update. The state makes recommendations based upon their sales data, and it's always higher than what we come to based upon how we're able to evaluate our statistics. Fairfield County is a little bit ahead of other counties. Bart gave me information about that. I did not know that, but I was able to confirm that we're the only ones this far along. So we're having discussions about these things earlier than the other counties that are under the order of Department of Taxation to conduct a sexennial. But I did call Clark County, and I believe theirs residential properties increased 32%, and we're at 27 and a half. Just to have that number in your thinking.
It's all about supply and demand. All right. Thank you very much for your update today, Dr. Brown. Airport update, John Coaches.
Making it snappy, we have a land lease, as we discussed in previous presentations for the board, airport authority to consider as a way to repay the construction costs of the hangers that we're billing and are doing very well at the airport. So this would recoup the construction cost over 30 years to the Board of Commissioners. And the land lease concept is a way for us to be able to do that. Have an agreement that could be renegotiated, it could be canceled with the proper 90-day notification, but just give a lot of flexibility for commissioners to do changes if they see fit. Stacy and Amy helped really get to the final report to get really to really just here for any questions.
Mr. Davis. So this really is just to take out the variations that there may be in the rental of the hangers?
That's correct, and a more smooth, consistent way of collecting rents for the airport. So we'll just collect the rents and then
When is this going to be before us for consideration?
It would go into effect when we obviously come to 2026.
Okay. Stace? Got anything you want to add? All right. Thanks for the brief updating. All right, this is the time we set aside for public comments. If anyone would like to address the commission, we ask you to step up to the podium. State your name and address, and limit your comments to three minutes, as we have a very full agenda today. Thank you. Morning, Ray.
Dave Steeman, 1481 Wesley Way. And listening to the reports this morning. This is just a small fraction of what goes on, I know, in the county. But it's important. And the people that do this are important for the whole situation. So with that thought, I'd like to turn to pray for the rest of this day. Lord, we come before you this morning, knowing that we do not know all the answers. We do not have all the the information that we need to make the right decisions. And, Lord, we pray that those people that are in the position will consider the people that are being touched and affected by all information and actions. And we pray, Lord, that you be with us, give us wisdom to do the right thing and help us to make those decisions meaningful for everyone. We pray in Jesus's name. Amen.
Thank you, Ray. Is there anyone else that would like to address the commission this morning?
Sherry Pynebury, 3464 South Bank Road, Walnut Township, Miller's Port. Well, we're coming down to the wire on the decision for the Eastern Cotton Tail Solar. It's anticipated that it will be at the board meeting on either August 21st or September 18th is the anticipation date, possibly. Let me go back to and I know Commissioner Fix wasn't here, but I'm assuming that you got the handout that I passed out. I'm going to talk common sense and how things are reasonable or unreasonable. Since Walnut Township has approximately 6,700 people just in Walnut Township. That's approximately, well, approximately one-sixth of the entire population of Walnut Township is in the Eastern Cotton Tail project within a mile. And you can see from Canal Road, where it takes a curve, you can see from, for instance, Bradbury's Home to Cattail Road. From Cattail Road, Lake Road, from Lake Road to Roughness. And from 256 on to, you can see Cattail, you can see 188. And from 188, you can see across. That's even Eastern Cotton Tail is saying 85% of the project is visible. It's unreasonable to think or to expect. These people, and I averaged two people per household, 258 homes within a half a mile. That's about 516 people. I didn't take the 2.6 people per household. I took two. Okay, 1,036 people within a mile. It is unreasonable to expect those people to shoulder the burden of this project for 30 or 40 years. A lot of these people won't even be around in 30 or 40 years. It's unreasonable to expect that 518 homes within a mile, or 258 homes within a mile, or 85 homes that are actually adjacent to the project that have people and families that their property values aren't as, or their property rights aren't as valuable as the 13 property owners that own the property in the project.
Please conclude your remarks, Sherry.
There are only five property owners that live, that are leasing a property that live in the area. I am again asking you, even Commissioner Fix and Commissioner Levesey, to please write a letter to the Ohio Power Siding Board in opposition.
I have.
Thank you.
Who would be next?
My 60 Baltimore Somerset Room. I've got it several times and asked you guys to please, please, please write this letter. I'm begging you. I'm slipping, and we're going to have to live with it for the next. I will be here for your support. Let's do it. Do what's right for the kingdom, not what's right for my people. Thank you.
Thank you. Who would be next? Hey, thank you all for coming today. Do we have a legal update this morning? Okay, thank you, Amy. County Administration update, Ani.
All right, thank you, Commissioner. Bennett, I think we've got a picture to pop up there. So the Ohio Department of Education and Workforce presented the 2025 Business Education Leader Awards at their annual Business Advisory Council Town Hall, which took place on July 21st. The Business Education Leader Awards for Excellent Business Advisory Councils recognizes two, three, and four-star rated business councils throughout the state of Ohio. That recognition is for their exceptional work building strong partnerships to instill professional skills for future careers and coordinating experiences for students. So you'll see in the picture, we have our friends from the Fairfield County Educational Service Center there, along with Rick Zabrack, who was also with them, part of the Business Advisory Council. And they did receive a three-star recognition. When Rick did send me this, he said it should have been a four-star. But he's not here today. I don't know if you want to elaborate on, I think we just missed it by the hair of our chinny chin.
It was just missed. So that's something we weren't.
But appreciate the partnership with ESC there. Review packet does contain a list of administrative approvals, and there are 24 resolutions on the agenda for the regular voting meeting. Couple that I will point out here. The first resolution amends the time and location for the September 16th meeting. This one will be an evening meeting. We had to reschedule that from today. And that will be at Rush Creek, the Fire Department in Breena at 7:00 PM. The next resolution on the agenda is to approve an expedited type-two annexation of 163.434 acres from Greenfield Township to the city of Lancaster. And I do see Stephanie Moscow here. I don't know if you want to add anything under that, Stephanie, or are you just here to observe? It'd be great that those folks can hear you.
So this is about 120 acres on either side of 33. And they are along Fair Wilson Road, where it has turned into Wilson. So it's within our Rock Mill Industrial Park, and the goal is to zone that advanced manufacturing, just expand our industrial park with additional development land ideal for manufacturing.
Thanks.
Thanks for being here, Stephanie. Facilities has resolution for a change order to the Cut Neck Construction Contract for the Workforce Center. This is for additional work totaling $39,012. John, anything you want to add?
Just a few through the construction process, few small changes and any details as well.
Thank you for your continued work there and also on the Sheridan Center. JFAS has 11 resolutions, including several memo receipts, a couple of network placement contracts, and the disposal of a salvage vehicle. Major Crimes has a resolution to approve a partial repayment of a violent crimes reduction grant. There are two cash advances from the general fund for the grant, and MCU has collected $90,000 towards that repayment. Or do you have any additional budget update?
Additional updates.
Thank you very much. Michelle, calendar review and invitations received, please.
Thank you. There are some variations. The upcoming Board of Commissioners meeting, August and September, are on the review agenda. On note that August 12th and 19th are at 9:00 AM, and August 26th at 3:00 PM in this room. The Regional Planning Commission meets today at 6:00 PM at the Record Center, the Lancaster Fairfield County Chamber of Commerce. Athena Wards banquet is August 7th at 5:30 PM at the Mill Event Center, and MCJDC has a Board of Trustees meeting on August 8th at 9:00 AM, and their Joint Board of Commissioners meeting at 10:30 AM. These are both at the MCJDC facility on the Verde Drive. Commissioners receive correspondence regarding March's scale solar facilities and the sexennial property tax update. That's all I have.
Thank you, Michelle. That's all.
All right, thanks. We'll go through an update from elected officials, apartment heads, Nikki Haley. Nikki Haley, Nikki Drake, sorry. Nikki Drake.
Area shout out for TIS Department. So we have 24 aerials that we back to 1938. When somebody calls me with a grave concern, I look through every single one of those. Years ago, we digitized those older ones and they're placed in the map, and then we can just look right through them. Where before we had the mountain door, line where that was on, go get that app and take forever just to get them. So they've been using those a lot.
All right, thank you for the update. Ani?
One quick thing, we are going to be recording a special meeting regarding footpath regulations. This is a request of Walnut Township, asking us to look at increased standards for North Bank and West Bank areas. And we're going to be holding that meeting on Thursday, August 7th at 7:00 PM. It'll be at the West Stone Community Center, which is the former American Legion Hall, which is at 2557 Canal Drive.
Thank you.
Thank you for your work with that, Ani.
Right, we lost Lisa for a minute. Brandon? Okay, Lisa? Okay, Jeremiah?
We are still chipping ceiling and cleaning up.
So I've heard incredibly positive feedback from the two most impacted townships, Greenfield and Pleasant, about the entire team, but specifically mentioning you and your team and how helpful they've been. So just want to pass on our thanks for always representing the county in the best way possible. So yeah, thank you. Dr. Brown, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I just wanted to say thanks to John Coaches. I mean, he was fully involved in everything too, obviously, from the EMA standpoint. And working with Tom Sheer, yes, Craig, his damage numbers, his tabos. There was
Thank you. Dr. Brown?
It's one report from the Budget Commission meeting yesterday that we increased the local government fund 2026 estimate from 1.5 million to 1.794 million. So that's positive. Thank you to the state for the increase of shared revenues in that regard. And I've been at the month for this month, and want to say thank you to economic development. Sometimes during these informal hearings, different conversations take different directions. And there was an individual who is trying to start their own business. We made a referral for the Revival and Loan Fund, and you guys have already followed up. So it's just good to hear that.
All right, thank you. Tony? All right. Ann?
Just a quick update. We completed our summer camps for students, those students last week. We had about 60 kids go through. Those were classes in STEM, Builders Camp. So it was a great success. A lot of the kids are already talking about wanting to come back next year. So they built some birdhouses last week. They didn't let me get on there. They didn't want a worker's comp claim. I'll start yours off, but it was a really good success, and we're expecting even more kids next year.
Good deal. Thank you. Thanks for feeding me that. John, you know, as I thank Jeremiah, I want to thank you. Continue to hear great feedback as well on the EMA efforts and all that you and your team are doing to help people get out from under the and all that you and your team are doing to help people, you know, from under this mess.
So good news on that, this week, uh, we did submit our information for Small Business Administration Disaster Assistance, and, um, they did review and will have scheduled a date to come down and do onsite assessment. So when they do that, we're starting to progress. The SBA disaster loans are something that kicks in in disaster situations that offers really amazing loan terms to those impacted. So we continue to that process, and then in parallel with townships and jurisdictions, in the public assistance process, we intend to submit that to the state on Wednesday and day. Uh, and we definitely met the, uh, minimum standards that are involved with the State Disaster Relief Fund. Don't have the statewide impact of the state federal funds at this moment, but we do have the, uh, that ability with the State Disaster Relief Fund.
Ask a question about that, please. The, uh, the governor declares a disaster. Is he limited by some geog- geographic bounds that the disaster is in?
No, no, and often.
Uh, let me make sure I'm asking the right question. When he declares a disaster, does that disaster have a geographic boundary?
In, in the FEMA world, it is usually the county impacted plus contiguous counties. For the State Disaster Relief Fund, I don't believe they have that same contiguous county piece, so it would be by the county applying.
So Senator Schaefer's letter to the governor excluding Pleasant Township. Is there some difference between Pleasant Township and Greenfield Township that I'm not aware of?
I think that was just an oversight, it would be for Fairfield County as a whole. You, you, the commit, the Board of Commissioners are the, uh, the seeking declaration of emergency. So what you passed last week is already the declaration.
So are we asking for the county to be declared a disaster, or for two townships to be declared a disaster?
Only the cities would have the ability to declare, which is very infrequent. Townships don't have that ability, um, for disaster relief funds. They do for bidding and all the other ORC codes that impact.
And the SBA opportunity, is that just profit, or is that also for nonprofit?
Nonprofit, profit, individuals, businesses, so there's revenue loss included in that program. So a lot of opportunities there.
Thank you. Yeah, Commissioner Levesey.
So, uh, John, soon after that, uh, disaster, so to speak, happened. I was able to correspond with the governor. And interesting enough, he had already known about it, sent pictures of it, so.
Yeah, we communicate, um, with the, they call it the hub, so basically the state intelligence side. So even Sunday, we were pushing drone video, video, you know? It's an amazing thing, if we ever have time, we'll show you the videos that we pulled off from the security cameras that we had implemented at the, at the festival event, that showed in the time lapse how quickly that, that flood came through. So we were able to have a lot of documentation, and then, you know, drone flights after the fact, Sheriff's Office, LPD. I mean, we just, a lot of data was collected or, you know, which is definitely.
I fully expected to do something, hopefully, right then.
I never want to anticipate that, but yeah, it would be, uh, definitely helpful to the townships that have experienced impacts as well as the hospital. Any folks, so.
Appreciate your, 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 thank you. And man?
A couple of things, um, it's compliance season, so we took part last week, um, in one of at least a couple audits for reflections related to cybersecurity. Uh, the consultant who was working on that audit, uh, was on behalf of the Secretary of State. Uh, he's actually worked for the Secretary of State in years past, and also at a federal level, uh, in the cybersecurity agency. It's just extremely complimentary of how, um, current state of cybersecurity performance was. Uh, so that was awesome to hear, uh, for me, and then, you know, for our team in the department. Um, extremely proud of, um, what we've done in recent years. Uh, so additionally, House Bill 96 has some specific language added to the Ohio Revised Code, um, related to cybersecurity, um, planning, uh, and so we're working on that alongside Jeff with.
Nice work, Dan. Corey?
August is Child Support Awareness Month, and we invite everybody to wear green tomorrow. Uh, do show support for that, and please send us some pictures.
Jeffrey?
Um, just that there will be a communication, uh, later this afternoon to employees that the Wellness Clinic has been, uh, reopened temporarily in the Fairhorn Center. Um, all that information will be made available. We're very thankful to our partners with FMC for their swift action in bringing the clinic back online. Um, the equipment was a total loss at the clinic, so, um, they've had to pull together some equipment. Um, also, uh, thanks to the staff out at the shelter. Uh, Scooby, the last remaining dog from Fido that was missing, was recovered this week and reunited with its owners. Uh, so that was a bit, a bit of news.
Thank you. Yeah. Old Business, Commissioner Davis. Good thing. Commissioner Levesey.
Oh, uh, yesterday, uh, Pickering House, uh, hospice, uh, had their annual, uh, ice cream social. And, uh, what's interesting about that, in Virginia, Pickering, well, she asked that they have that annually on the anniversary of her death. And, uh, you know, what a great organization, I mean, they are just so giving and caring. I also sat there with, uh, De Meyer, he was one of the original founders of, uh, of hospice for Fairfield County, and talked about, you know, how it's evolved and how they got started. And basically, they had nothing to begin with. Of course, Virginia stepped up and provided funding to make that happen, so it was, it was, it was a nice event.
Right. Uh, I have no Old Business, New Business, Commissioner Levesey.
No, thank you.
Commissioner Davis. All right, um, we will now go into our voting pattern. If you are able, please, three eyes, and join us in the pledge of allegiance.
He is the flag of the United States of America and considered the relevant political stance of one nation, under the Constitution.
All right, uh, are there any announcements, Rochelle?
There are none.
Okay, is there a motion for the approval of the minutes at the July 29th meeting?
Still waiting.
Second. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Levesey? Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Minutes passed 3-0. From the Commissioners, Resolution 2025-8.5.a. A resolution amending Res- Resolutions 2024-12.3.a., 2025-4.22.a., 2025-6.24.a., and 2025-7.29.a. Establishing the Fairfield County Board of Commissioners 2025 Review Session of Regular Meeting Dates and Special Meeting Dates.
Under, uh, Commissioners, I move Resolu- Resolutions A and B.
We separate A and B.
Yes.
So we're just doing A?
So we have a motion on A, is there a second? On A? Second? Any discussion on A? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Commissioner Levesey?
Yes.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Motion passes 3-0.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Resolution 2025-8.5.b. A resolution to approve expedited type-two annexation of 163.434 plus or minus acres from Greenfield Township to the city of Lancaster pursuant to Ohio Revised Code 709.023. Petitioners Zach Walker, Craig Moncrief, and Jeffrey Weber.
So move.
Second, discussion.
President?
Yes.
I'm going to abstain here, I'm in discussions on a business opportunity with one of the petitioners.
Understood, thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Commissioner Levesey?
Yes.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Motion passes 2-0.
Wait, you should ask Commissioner Davis for his vote, so he can abstain.
Commissioner Davis?
I abstain.
All right. Apologies, thank you. Fairfield County Engineer, Resolution 2025-8.5.c. A resolution to request for appropriations for additional unanticipated receipts of memo receipts and memo expenses for Fund 3445 Bridgeland Raiding Project.
Under Fairfield County Engineer, I move Resolutions C, D, and E.
Second. Discussion?
Happy to answer questions.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Commissioner Levesey?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Motion passes 3-0. Fairfield County Facilities, Resolution 2025-8.5.f. A resolution for a change order number one to the contract with the Cut Neck Construction and the Fairfield County Commissioners for the Workforce Center.
So move.
Second. Discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Commissioner Levesey?
Yeah.
Commissioner Davis? Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Motion passes 3-0. Fairfield County Job and Family Services, Resolution 2025-8.5.g. A resolution authorized an approval of a service agreement by and between Fairfield County Job and Family Services, Child Protective Services Division, and Champion Life House Health.
Under Fairfield County Job and Family Services, I move Resolutions G through Q.
Second. Discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Commissioner Levesey?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Motion passes 3-0. For the Fairfield County Sheriff, Resolution 2025-8.5.r. A resolution to approve the purchasing of a gun by a retiring officer.
So move.
Second. Discussion?
This is for Deputy Gary Humble, so wish him well in his retirement.
We got a nice note from Deputy Gary, and, uh, he loved his job, and, uh, hopefully he loves his retirement just as much, God bless him.
His job is a tire and litter control officer.
Sure, so.
It's the person that tires.
I believe that's correct. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Commissioner Levesey?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Motion passes 3-0. Solvent to Ranger Crime Unit, Resolution 2025-8.5.s. A resolution authorized the approval of partial repayment of an advance to the general fund from MCU 7911 Violent Crimes Reduction Grant.
Discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Commissioner Levesey?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Motion passes 3-0. From Fairfield County Utilities, Resolution 2025-8.5.t. A resolution to appropriate the unappropriated major expenditure object category for Utilities 5044 contractual services.
For Fairfield County Utilities Department, I move Resolutions T, U, V, W.
Second. Discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Commissioner Levesey?
Yes.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Motion passes 3-0. Payment of bills, Resolution 2025-8.5.x. A resolution authorized approval of payment of invoices from Department of the D Board of Commissioner and approval.
Discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Commissioner Levesey?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Motion passes 3-0. Connect regular meeting schedule for August 12th at 9:00.
Rochelle, is there any other business before the commission this morning? Commissioner Davis?
I'm sorry, I'm hung up on this litter control officer thing.
I'm sending the sheriff an email right now, so.
The, the salary is, some are all, and salary is covered by the Solid Waste District, which I know the officer doesn't work for. But, but where I'm hung up is, I'm just curious if the sheriff will deem that service to be important enough to replace that officer, or if under all other circumstances in his office, there are other priorities he would be more interested in.
Got a question?
I copied you on the email.
Thank you.
All right, any other business before the commission this morning? Thank you all for being here today, I'm looking for a motion.
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye, we are, sir.
That's when we meet with me, you know who you are.